Good evening. Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for July 21st, 2014. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful day in Haywood County. Guide us as we make decisions that affect our citizens now and in the future. Help and watch over our elderly and our children, and watch over our armed forces that protect us both at home and abroad. Thank you for this county and its people. In your name, amen.
Thank you. It will move to the public comment session. We have one person who has asked to address the board, Mr. Danny Ledford. No, Jack, Danny, Danny Ledford. Mr. Ledford has asked to address the board.
Good afternoon Chairman and Commissioners. I would just like to know where you all stand on privatizing the recycling center in Clyde. We cannot get a straight answer from anyone. As an employee, we are, we would like to know where we have been, we have been worried a lot, and we'd like to know what's going on with it, where it stands, and when it, and when it's going to happen.
Aaron, do you care to address that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Ledford, I have, I have actually discussed with them that on June 16th and subsequent to that at public meetings, although no official vote has been taken to put the recycle center out to bid, that there are discussions on the matter that the commission is moving, that y'all would have to vote and consider moving forward to put the project either out to bid or how you'd want to do that to privatize this matter. And that that was what was discussed at the prior meetings. It has been, for example, as recently as the COG meeting in Maggie Valley discussed as a primary option. And I, and I have advised, I believe, Mr. Ledford and Mr. King and others when they have asked of that. No exact timetable has been set that would be a correct answer, and I did not feel that I could do that without y'all's vote, basically.
The board has, has taken no, no official action. There are discussions ongoing, and it, it could, it could well happen. It has happened in other parts of solid waste. It's something that's being very closely examined, but there'll be ample public notice prior to any, any vote being taken on exactly how we proceed from this point. But it is something that's being studied and actively considered.
Because you just don't know how much pressure it puts on people wondering what's going to happen.
I understand. It, it takes time, you know, to, to work through the legal ramifications of, of something of this magnitude to make sure it's, it's, it's done correctly. Our intent certainly is not to put undue pressure on, on any of the employees.
We got it.
And I'm sorry if that's happening, but, but we have to be deliberate in, in these kinds of matters. So, we'll move, we'll move forward with, with the process, and you'll be notified and asked to, for your input again before any decision is made.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Kirsten?
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the commission, my name is Jack Kirsten. I'm an attorney. I represent Wanda Brooks. Wanda's family, and I also represent others in her neighborhood, so I'm asking for my five minutes, and one of whom is Mrs. Cook. Wanda Brooks' family has lived in Haywood County for over four generations. She lived in the neighborhood across the street on Hemlock Street from the new proposed homeless shelter. Her mother lived there, her grandmother lived there, her great-grandmother lived there. She has concerns about what's happening. She has a place to live, and she has a place to try and earn a living. The place where she tries to earn a living is located at the corner of Brown Avenue and Hemlock, across the street from the proposed homeless shelter, halfway house, and soup kitchen. She's a compassionate woman. She pointed out to me that she grew up knowing, knowing hard times. Her neighbors certainly are not the wealthy influential people of the neighborhood of this town. They know what it's like. She spoke to her neighbors at length, over 70 of them. Every single one of them, without exception, is against this idea. Why aren't they here? Not off work in time, afraid to anger the sheriff's office, don't want to speak up in public, variety of reasons. Some are here, and some may speak. They're concerned about an influx of the homeless in their neighborhood. We have been told by, by Pastor Hoenercamp that this will serve only the homeless of Haywood County. Their concern is this would be a magnet for the homeless from all over western North Carolina, beautiful place to sleep and meal. He assures me that can't happen. They're not certain how you differentiate between the whereabouts of homeless people when by definition they don't have a home. So how do you know they're from here or just came here from Asheville? But nonetheless, he tells us also, he was kind enough, Pastor Hoenercamp, that anyone who doesn't belong there will be a bust back to where they came from. Daily, weekly, monthly, I don't know. Presumably, there are plans for this. The security concerns they have presumably are going to be addressed by the sheriff and the police chief. I hope so. The south Main Street quarter of Waynesville has been in sad shape for many years. It's now developing. The property up at the corner just sold for $1,400,000, the corner of Brown Avenue and South Main Street, for development. The hope of these people when that prison closed was that the development would raise property values, would energize their neighborhood, would cause a redevelopment. I don't think they think this is going to help. Has anyone thought that perhaps this property, as property values go up, could be sold or leased, and the money built, used to build a homeless center somewhere that's not two blocks from four bars and an ABC store, and not across the street from a single-family neighborhood? I don't know. If this is going forward, and I think it is, I think we're talking about an issue that's already been decided, then these people need the assurances that they've been told, for example, I just found out tonight from a gentleman from the open door, that while the homeless shelter is only going to take local residents who agreed to the three-day program and so forth, well, the people who come for a meal, there's no such stricter, but they will have controls in place. I don't know what those are. I don't know if you gentlemen know. I know my client doesn't. Pastor Hoenercamp said, and he was very candid, he said, "I certainly can't tell you this is going to improve your neighborhood. Well, we'll do our best to minimize the damage done." Well, that's better to hear than something else, but that's not exactly cheering to hear. At least it is in your power to make sure that all possible safeguards are in place. For example, why is the entrance to all of this, the comings and goings, the busing of the people who don't belong there, the people who do belong there, coming in in the morning, leaving, leaving at night, whatever? Why does this happen on Hemlock Street, across the street from these people's houses? Why can't the entrance be oriented to the sheriff's department? A little better security there? And instead of tearing down the barbed wire fence and chain link fence, which should be, is there any reason there couldn't be an attractive fence separating this from their neighborhood? I ask you, whatever your decision is, and even if it's already been made, to take into account the people who live there and do everything possible to protect their homes, everything possible to protect their welfare. We luckily heard from Pastor Hoenercamp, but what he says will happen is what he hopes will happen. So do we. I think you have it within your power to have some important strictures and guidelines contained in whatever kind of agreement you have with them, to make certain that it happens, and a way to check the ongoing progress of this. In any event, gentlemen, I thank you for your time and consideration. Please help these people protect their homes, and the business people in there protect their investments. It's important to them, it's important to me, it's important to the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think you make some good points, and I think it is important that, and I think that the residents and their welfare have been taken into consideration, will continue to be. I have a lot of faith in the sheriff to execute appropriate security out there and planning. And Greg, if you'd like to say anything, please, you're certainly welcome. And I have, I have a lot of faith in the, the faith community that have put a lot of time and effort into, into planning this. I know, I know their boards have worked tirelessly and have addressed many of these issues. You know, and this is nothing, I mean, there has been concerns for security out in Hazelwood for a long time with the minimum security prison being there and, and so forth. So, I'm not sure what the, the business are that, Jack, that, what was the business that you were representing? Ms. Brooks had a business, you said?
I'm sorry, what?
What business does Ms. Brooks have out there?
Yeah, I have alley cats, and I also own a rental there.
You said what?
I have a rental in that area, and I have alley cats.
Alley cats?
Right across from.
Right across the street.
Oh, okay. That's, that's a nightclub or whatever. Okay.
And then, while I'm up, if I can say something.
If you come to the, to the mic, and just give your name again for the record.
I'm sorry. I think many people in the neighborhood would have come forward earlier, but people are afraid to speak against the church and against the sheriff, because we do, we, we know he's a great man. And this was very hard for me. I have stressed over and prayed it would just go away, and it didn't. I don't think it's good for our neighborhood. I think this is a time where Hazelwood could be revitalized, and I think it's going to bring it right back down. I went around just today and took 70 flyers around, talked to at least 70 people. They're all against it, but they think we're beat. And we probably are, but it's, it's serious stuff. There can be a lot of theft and different things brought into the area in the fuzzbuster. This week, there's four known homeless people that are in here for theft and different things. This is what we see happening to our area. And people have held onto those properties in hopes of getting some value and being able to sell and get out of there. And they don't think that's going to happen now. That's it.
Well, thank you. You're, you're right. This has been discussed now for, for several months, since, actually, the beginning of the year, I believe. Sheriff?
Just, yeah.
Greg?
Commissioners, brought with me today Captain Brian Beck, Waynesville Police Department. Waynesville Police Department, their jurisdiction is there at the old DOC property, and we partner in many, many aspects. Bill Hollingshead and I have talked about this numerous times, and I'm going to let the captain first speak about their patrol areas and their patrol responsibilities.
Okay.
Then I'll come back to the podium.
All right. Thank you. Captain, welcome.
Yes, sir. The patrol zone is Zone Three for the Waynesville Police Department. We have one person assigned per shift for that zone. Regular patrols, they would continue as they are today. Any need that would arise from the shelter, one phone call, just like anywhere else in the town, an officer would be there within two minutes. That is, our average response time is two minutes. I don't foresee it being any other burden upon our department to patrol or to keep order in that area.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of Captain?
How about, right now, I mean, obviously, they, they meet down, or at least at the soup kitchen is on Frog Level, so how do you see the, I mean, as far as the incidences you have to, that you're called to and reports that are made from that area regarding the homeless that would be the individuals utilizing this facility out there? I mean, how is that now?
At the soup kitchen is where you're speaking of right now, correct?
Right. And, and around this area, the Frog Level?
At one point in time, when the soup kitchen first opened, we did have a number of calls, a great number of calls to the area. The thing to realize, though, is this, before the soup kitchen ever came to the Frog Level area, that was the hangout for the homeless people. It always has been. What people don't see right now is what we see, is it's no longer this area. It has already moved towards Walmart. If you'll walk the creek bank behind Walmart, behind the sheriff's office, all the way back down to Lee Industries, you're going to find camps everywhere, because it has made that move in that direction. A lot of our people have left the Frog Level area, even though that is where the soup kitchen is at now. I don't know why, other than we do have a lot of people out in front of Walmart at times, panhandling, things like that, usually once or twice, and we don't have problems with those anymore. I don't see the panhandling being a problem at the new facility, at the old jail. But you'd be very interested to just walk up the creek banks and see how it's already migrated towards Walmart.
Do you have an estimate, either one of you, about the number of homeless that we have in, in Waynesville and Haywood County?
I do not have those numbers.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
One more thing.
Any other questions?
The ones that were, that are in Frog Level now, and I believe he can also give you the same numbers, the ones you see on the streets, probably only about 50% of those actually come to the soup kitchen, am I correct? So, the soup kitchen has not made a difference whether they're there or not. That's where their family homes, everything have been in that area, and that's where it's always been.
Okay. Okay.
Also, if I can speak for the Haywood County Emergency Homeless Shelter and their board right now, they have a security guard that works for them every night, seven nights a week, and they plan on continuing to employ that security there at the shelter and at the Next Step Ministry location as well. That's already in their plans, and that'll continue to be what they do as well.
Okay. Any questions of the sheriff?
I think one of the concerns that they had and probably expressed was, you know, obviously, at night, you've got the security guard that, that works there and takes care of things, and you probably don't have too many issues, but what about during the daytime? When they talk about the businesses and the residences, and you have this influx of people, I mean, how do you anticipate handling that? And I'm just asking these questions as they're out there now, and I think they're viable questions that we need to, certainly need to consider.
Well, and in any normal day there at the sheriff's office, I would say that there's probably no less than 30 patrol vehicles coming in and out of that driveway, and we would continue to monitor Waynesville Police Department's traffic like we do now. If it's something inside the city limits, we're going to help, because we could respond and help them anytime that they have a call, just like they do us, if it's within, within reach for them being that they have a jurisdiction, city limits. But I don't, I don't see that that is going to be any more of an issue now than it, than it is for him down in Frog Level.
Isn't there, and correct me if I'm wrong, a requirement that for people who are staying there, that they have to agree to either volunteer or work during the day?
Yes. I would really like for someone from the homeless shelter and Next Step Ministry to, to answer those questions.
Okay. Well, just, just one second. This lady I know had asked to speak, so I don't want to be disrespectful. So if you'd like to come up and, and make your comments, ma'am. Just give us your name, if you would, please.
My name is Stephanie Cook, and I'm a resident over there on Bellmead Drive. I'm a single mother of a six-year-old little girl, and I'm already limited to her playing outside due to the fact of speeders for the dumpsters. But I feel like it would be unnecessary on, for me to basically imprison her in the home when they are free to be roaming those streets. I've already had two attempted BNEs on my house, and one time, my vehicle was actually home. They didn't know that I wasn't there. I'm just worried for the sole fact of her. I mean, I can take care of myself, but I'm not the only single parent out there, and I've, I just don't feel like it's fair to her. Maybe if the entrance was changed towards the sheriff's department, I would feel a little bit more secure. I mean, like I said, I'm a single mom. Her father's deceased. I'm all she has, and I, I, I would, I'd probably end up in jail if something happened to her. But, I mean, I have to look out for her, and I'm also looking out for the other children that are in that, in that area, because I have a lot of grandchildren, two whom reside around the corner from there as well. And I thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Would you like to come up? And again, just for the record, state your name, please.
Nick Connor Camp. I'm the president of the Haywood Christian Emergency Shelter. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners. As you stated, yeah, this conversation's been going on for about six months, and it was just last week that we found out that there were some concerns from the community. And I do deeply appreciate Ms. Brooks and Mr. Kirsten giving us an opportunity to clear up some misinformation, and we have begun what's probably going to be an ongoing dialogue of how to make sure we minimize any kind of issues down there. Second of all, I think this facility is going to be one of the most secure facilities anywhere in the community. These are folks who are going to sign up for a program. Anyone can come for three nights, but after that, they will be signing up for a program, a personal growth plan, a case manager. We're here to help rehabilitate lives, not just provide a shelter at night. And to do that, there's going to have to be a lot of management. During the daytime, they'll close down the facility during the day and help them get off campus to go to job training through Goodwill. Goodwill is hiring an employee to come down and help us to get them the job training that they need. Rehabilitation services, they're going to have to go to DSS, using public transit, or we'll be using our private vehicles to get them to the places they need to go. So I think that with having security during the evenings, throughout the night, and in the mornings, shutting down the campus during the day, we'll be able to provide good security along with the sheriff and the police department. And the other benefit with a low-income neighborhood is we're going to be bringing in a free soup kitchen, where there'll be, any family can get a free meal that day, and we think it'll be an asset. Truly, today, and we talked about property values, the prison as it sits today is not helping anyone's property values. We're going to pretty, pretty up that property. We're going to improve it. We're going to make it look nice. I, I think it's going to be, I can't guarantee long-term, and that's what I said to Mr. Kirsten, is I'm not a realtor. I can't say that we're going to improve property values, but what we do on that property, I do not believe is going to decrease property values. But because these concerns are so new, we're just now getting a chance to address them. We've only talked three days ago, and, but we have offered to spend more time with Ms. Brooks and any of her constituency to answer any of the questions that she might have.
Okay. Our board had agreed to move forward on, on February 3rd, so there will be continuing dialogue with folks in the community. Is that, that right?
Absolutely.
Whether it be about an entrance or any other issues that, that may arise over time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. One final comment, Jack, if you would.
I just wanted to ask you a quick question. You just found out about this last week. I found out about it shortly before that. You talked to 70 neighbors or so today. Is that not right? How many even knew about this?
Not many.
Why?
I'm, I can't, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. My client talked to over 70 neighbors today. Almost none knew anything about this. You may have known about it, and you certainly knew about it. If there's this concerted effort to involve the neighborhood and make certain they're along for this ride, and they're all for it, why didn't someone take the time and trouble to think, gee, do these folks who live across the street want this to happen? It's a little late, but better late than never. I'm just suggesting that you gentlemen see that the things that should have been addressed a long time ago, the concerns of these folks a long time ago, are now addressed. Again, I thank you. And please, talk to these folks about changing the entrance. Why does all this coming and going and buses and back and forth? Can it be turned the other way? Thank you.
I will ask that those county representatives and from the faith-based community, the sheriff, discuss the entrance. I don't know if there's another alternative or not. I will say that this matter has been in the mountaineer almost every edition the last several months.
Smoking Mountain News.
Pardon me? Smoking Mountain News as well. So it, you know, I, I don't know why folks didn't know, but there was opportunity for them to know. Okay, sir. Go ahead. Your name is?
My name's Jerry Owens.
Jerry Owens.
I've got a business up there. I've had it for 41 years up there. Right here's the fuzzbuster. Hype of these people, not hype of them, but there are a bunch of these people that were, has worked for me. It's in this fuzzbuster today. I can point them out to you if you would like. I've got a real anchor for all of our questions here. Let's put this in front of your business, and your house, and your house, and your house, and your house, and everybody that wants this to go on, let's put it in front of their house and see how they feel. I'll guarantee you, they won't like it. I've got a business that I've worked for 41 years for, as hard as I could work from daylight to dark. That's the reason I'm standing here greasy right now, and you haven't got your suits on. I've been at work, but there's nothing fire about this. I was raised up in Frog Level. There was, there was bums in Frog River when I was a kid. Now the bums is probably 200 or 300, version 3 or 4 when I was a kid. All that's going to move right up there. Let it move in front of Yorj's house. Let them rape Yorj's kids and stuff like that, and see how Yorj would feel. I'll guarantee you, I called the law when, when the old junkyard was up there. Does anybody remember when the old junkyard's up there and all the bums hanging out there? They moved the junkyard, and all the bums come to my piece of property. I called the law three and four and five times a day to get them out of my yard. I finally got them out of my yard. I had to hire a man to stand. They slept in my dump trucks. They drank their wine in my dump trucks. They slept in my dump trucks. They stole anything they could unboat. Again, everybody's for this. Let them move them in front of their house and see how they would feel. Now put your vote out there and see how you feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to address the board?
I work at Balsam Road Ring. You know, even though you talk about having security inside that, you have no clue what goes on up the road from you. I sit and work there every day. You wouldn't believe the needles, the drugs, stuff, wrappers, and stuff I find every day. You sit and watch crossover to the, the car wash, these drug dealings goes there every day. So it ain't just the thing that's there, it's what them people's going to be doing outside of that, when they're doing it in Eagles parking lot, they doing it at Walmart, they do it at Joe's, the easy stop, they do it at Shell Station. That's what everybody's going to have to understand. It ain't where they sleep at night, where they eat. It's what they're going to be doing somewhere else besides right there. That's going to be their holding place. And it's not fair that everybody has to keep everybody else up. When I work every day, 40 hours a week, and it's hard for working people to eat and sleep because they have to work to feed their youngs. But all we're going to be doing is keeping up them people to where they can run and steal from Jerry Owens, they can take and run drugs. I see it every day, right there in front of the sheriff's department. Eagles and that car wash, it's every day. And I mean, you know, you're just making a sleeping place for them and feeding them. That's all you're doing. That's my opinion about that.
Well, thank you. To my understanding, there's no tax dollars going to fund this. It's all private contributions. Sir, did you care to?
Perry Hines, Director of the Open Door. Appreciate the expressions that we have heard today. It's not always easy to know where to place anything. I know, I understand all that, but I want to assure the people that have spoken today that as the director of the open door and the feeding location, we too want to be responsible, and we want to provide for the people who come, because we serve a lot of people at 32 location, and we're so thankful we've been able to do that in a successful manner. One thing I want to say to concur along with our police officer, too, a lot of people are coming from Hazelwood to the 32 Commerce location right now. One of the things that we have sought to do as a hand that feeds people... One of the things that we have sought to do, as a hand that feeds people, we have, we have stood with the community. If they don't respect the community, they don't enjoy the services of the open door. And we've tried to be very consistent with that. So in one sense, along with the law, we can have a hand in helping to regulate by saying, respect our community if you want services at the open door as well. So, plus, of course, we're trying to reach out to a whole constituency in Hazelwood. Many of which need the services that we render right now at 32 Commerce Street.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken that would care to address the board? We can't have a debate, really. We've given everybody an opportunity. I said, we've tried to give everybody an opportunity to speak. Okay, but that's the end. I mean, we're not going to have people back and forth. We could be here forever.
I'm just feeling, well, I went down and kind of asked around in Frog Level. And what I found is that one of the businesses had to put up a fence because people were going on the property, using the bathroom, taking things off the vehicles. And he showed me that day, I'll win. He had a camera. He showed me back there where there was a man waiting for the soup kitchen to open up. He said maybe an hour before that, there'd been like eight of them waiting. So they just, they got away from the soup kitchen, but they're in the area. And that's what we're fear is, they're going to be in the area, not, you know, at the facility. And they just got far enough away probably so they can't be seen, and that's what we foresee happening. And of course, property values are a big deal, because everybody says Frog Level will never be anything until the soup kitchen is gone. Well, Hazelwood is now in a great position to be revitalized, and that's what we feel is going to hurt their property values, and there's no way, no matter how well it's controlled, that it will not hurt the property, property values. But they definitely had to put fences up, and I saw for myself a man out there waiting for the soup kitchen to open.
All right, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment session. Does anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to make on anything they've heard? I would just like to reiterate that I have confidence in the Sheriff and the Waynesville Police Department and the faith-based community, that they will do what they have said they're going to do, and that they will listen to you. And if you have concerns, I think they will address them to the best of their ability. I know we have homeless people in our community, and I, I don't know that having a shelter or a soup kitchen in one particular area is going to eliminate them from being in another area. I mean, we heard that they were in Hazelwood already, and the soup kitchens in Frog Level, so I don't know. This is something that the Sheriff initially came up with, with, with the other folks in the faith-based community, as a way to try to solve some of these problems long-term. And I don't think, I think we have to try to do something, and I think this is, is a worthy effort. That's my opinion. Anybody else have any comments they want to make or questions?
I just wanted to say, it'll be, it's a solution, hopefully, to the problem. If people can get help to find jobs, they'll find jobs. If they don't know how to fill out, I think when we were doing the workshop, we had someone from the, from the ministry say that an individual didn't even know how to fill out an application. So when people can get help to fill out application and job training, hopefully they'll get a job instead of being, being out walking on the street. And I look this as a solution to the problems that we have in our county. And, and I have had a business in Frog Level for 23 years, so I understand, you know, what people are talking about, so. But, you know, we, we have to try to help those that are out there, you know, as much as we can. So I'd really, I appreciate the Sheriff, the Sheriff's heart in trying to help, help those, and I think, hopefully, this will help be a solution for our community and be something that we can point to as being a success in the future.
And, and a year from now, if, if you, if you see that this is not, if problems are not being addressed, then come back and talk to us, and we'll see what else can be, can be done. I think that's, at this point in the process, is about as fair as we can, a resolution as we can have. So, and I think I can speak for all the other board members, that we will certainly listen, and if there's something we can do, a problem is not being addressed, we'll do our level best to, to address it. So, okay.
Really, that's the mission of our faith, you know? Whatever church you go to, to me, our main mission is to help the needy. And, you know, you need to try some. If it doesn't work, you, you back up and try something else. So, you know, I think it's worth giving it a try, to see if it'll work. And it, you know, if it works, it puts people to work, and Sheriff, I guess, keeps people out of the jail, we not having to spend money on, and by the expense of insurance and all that. So some of those people, I'm sure, would like to be helped. Not all of them, you know? Some people want to continue doing what they're doing, but if we can save a few of those and get those off the street, we doing Haywood County a big favor.
Anyone else?
You know, honestly, I think when, when this came before us, we were looking at different projects, and this was a potential project that we thought would be helpful. And I can honestly say I didn't really think about this potential issue or it being controversial at the time. I do know, though, that with Sheriff Christopher, Captain Beck, and Perry, and Nick, that they will, they're good people to work with. I mean, we could have a situation where somebody was placing something in that particular area that we had absolutely no control over, and there weren't good people to work with. I certainly understand that each of you that spoke this morning about issues with your home, I mean, that, those are, those are things that, that have come up a lot since I've been a Commissioner for the last 12 years, but nobody wants something right next to I don't know eventually how this will work out, but I feel comfortable with the people involved in it. And I hope they can address your concerns. And I do believe that the concerns that you had here this morning will be listened to, as opposed to, in some instances, where people just don't care. So it's something that I think every town, when, when we have, you know, the town of Waynesville and Haywood County are, and we're having to be concerned about homeless people, that, that in and of itself is a, is a very big concern. You know, if I'm in Asheville some, and I'm there quite often, they're, they're all over the place, and, and it's a sad situation. And I hope that, that this is something that can help that, and as Nick explained, you know, do some rehabilitation as opposed to just allowing it to continue. I do know they have strict rules on drug use, alcohol use. I mean, they can't get in there and go to that place if they're under the influence or impaired. And so it will not be assisting them or providing a crutch to that. But, and I hope, and I, I'm sure that you all have listened to the concerns today, and will continue to address those, and, and continue to listen to the folks in the community.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move to administrative and agency reports. We first have a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Ira Dove is with us to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to you Commissioners. On June 13th, or the letter was dated June 13th, from the Government Finance Officers Association, the Director of which is Stephen Gothier, we received the following letter. I will say that if you were to walk up into the finance office, this is not the first time that we have received this letter, that we have received primarily due to the efforts of Ms. Julie Davis, numerous awards over the year for having a very open and transparent accounting system. And I'm going to read from this one. Dear Mr. Swanger, we are pleased to notify you that your comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2013 qualifies for a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The certificate of achievement plaque or medallion will be shipped to Ms. Julia H. Davis, Finance Officer, under separate cover in about eight weeks. We hope that you will arrange a formal presentation of the certificate, an award of financial reporting and achievement, and the appropriate publicity will be given to this notable achievement. A sample, news releases enclosed. We wanted to put this before you today so that you would know what is forthcoming and the high honors that they have earned.
Yeah. I've been up on the fourth floor, and the walls are lined with similar accolades from those competent to make decisions and judgments regarding financial reporting and, and accounting. So Julie, you are certainly an asset to the county, and this, this award, like all others you've received, is certainly well-deserved.
This, this is a staff effort, though. This is not just me. Wanted to make that clear. It's the entire finance office.
And you do, you do have a good staff.
Yeah, and you're the leader, and we appreciate what you and your staff do.
Thank you.
And for, what you do for Haywood County and the...
Ira, how many times is this? I think I've seen this more than once here.
I, I think, I know of at least six, seven.
Seventeen. It's been, all 14 years I've been here, and three before I came.
Seventeen.
Yes.
That's remarkable.
I think that says a whole lot right there.
Says, says it all.
All 14 years of Ms. Davis' tenure.
Okay, Ira, the second item under administrative agency reports is a letter from the Haywood County Board of Education Chairman, Mr. Chuck Francis.
This letter was from June 17th, and addressed to yourself as Chairman. It reads, "It is our pleasure to work with you and the County Commissioners regarding Haywood County Schools Funding Formula. But the County Commissioners and the Board of Education have worked in the past and agreed to the dollar amount of funds prior to their distribution. Ms. Davis has been an asset to the Haywood County Schools, and we often seek her advice regarding capital outlay, capital projects, deeds, leases, and other issues affecting our school system. We look forward to working with you and the County Commissioners in the future as we continue advancing educational excellence in Haywood County."
Thank you. I've had the opportunity to speak with Chairman Francis, and he amplified those comments, as well as the Superintendent of Schools, who echoed those as well. And I've yet to speak to anyone in the school system who disagrees with this, this assessment. So, any comments or questions about the letter from the school system? Okay. Again, Julie, thank you. Okay, next is a discussion and adjustment to the agenda. We were running behind this week preparing lease agreements, and the approval for the Next Step Ministry Open Door in the Haywood Christian Emergency Shelter was, ended up being the last item of new business. There, I see several people here who are in attendance primarily for that. Would there be any objection of the board? If we move that to the first item of new business, so if these folks have other things they need to do tonight, we could set them on their way. Any objections?
I don't have any objections.
Okay. If not, then item 12 of new business will move to the first item of new business. Any other adjustments to the agenda? If not, we'll move then to the consent agenda. We've had the opportunity to approve the June 16th, 2014 regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those? Hearing none, we'll move to the second item, Mr. David Francis, for our tax administrator. Welcome, David.
Hello there. Congratulations, Julie. Thank you for all your help you've given me over the years, too. I really appreciate that. Before you Commissioners, you have the releases and refunds for the month of June. Nothing extraordinary to report there. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer the best I can.
Okay. Any questions of our tax administrator? Okay. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move next to Julie Davis, our Finance Director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to say that first, that I appreciate the support of everybody on the board, in the staff of the county, in the community. I've gotten a lot of support the past few weeks, and I certainly appreciate it. The item I have on the agenda first, on the consent agenda, is a contract that we do every year. It's with the Agriculture and Consumer Services with the State of North Carolina. This is actually the Forest Service, and they had submitted a budget to us that was approved. We pay 40%. The state pays 60%. Our portion this year is $96,425. We have a member from the Forest Service here, if you'd like to have him come up and talk at all, but this is actually something we do every year on an annual basis.
Yeah, this has been ongoing annually for many years now.
Many years, yes, since I've been here, certainly.
Right. Okay. Any questions of Julie? Regarding this? Okay. Okay, then, Julie, we'll move to item four, and budget amendment.
This budget amendment that I have here is for $2,500. This is federal funding for the Health Department. It's for the Lazarus Project, if you don't, aren't familiar with that. It's for public education, for lock boxes, for drug drop-off locations.
Okay. Any questions there? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to the fifth item of the consent agenda. Mr. Dove, regarding a contract with Health and Human Services.
Yes. Item number five is for a wrap-up of fiscal year 2013-2014. This was additional federal funding for administrative cost out of that contract of $3,782.
Okay. So that's a contract amendment. Any questions there? Okay, we'll go ahead and move then to the sixth item, Ira.
Sixth item, these are the different, and this is for the fiscal year of 2014-2015, the contracts I'm about to discuss now. And these are the contracts that are over $50,000 for the Health and Human Services Agency. There is a Champion Cab Medicaid Medical Transportation Contract. This, again, is from federal funding for $90,000. Southwestern, that's A. B is Southwestern Child Care. That's federal funding. Administrative costs and subsidies. The administrative cost should be about $90,000 for support services, with $2,110,000 going for direct services in this year, and those would pay the subsidies. The other contract that we have, and again, that was all federal money, is C, Mountain Projects Medicaid Medical Transportation Contract. That, again, is federal funding at $140,000.
Okay. These are, again, annual contracts. Any, any questions of the board? Did we cover the last one on 140? We did, didn't we?
The Mountain Project at 140, so we had the three.
Okay. Okay, any questions on the consent agenda? If not, entertain a motion that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Who moved?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
unanimous, thank you. Okay, we'll move to old business. I will, for the record, read the language requesting action. It would be a quest, request adoption of the resolution, subject to and conditioned upon the approval of the asset purchase agreement by Haywood Regional Medical Center, approving the sale and conveyance of its reserved reverter interest and the sale of the Haywood Regional Medical Center Hospital Facilities to Duke Life Point Haywood Regional Medical Center Incorporated pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 131E-13, and the account, the county officials authorization to execute the asset purchase agreement and such deeds of conveyance, deeds of release, and bills of sale as necessary to release and convey the interest of the county and the facilities of Haywood Regional Medical Center to Duke Life Point Haywood Regional Medical Center Incorporated pursuant to the aforementioned asset purchase agreement. It's a mouthful. Chip, I'll turn to you, and then I think some other folks are here from, from Duke Life Point that want to make a short presentation.
Thank you, Chairman and Members. The, what you just read is essentially, is more of an executive summary of the, of the resolution itself. Would you like me to read the resolution in its entirety?
I think that would be appropriate.
This resolution is at a regular public meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners pursuant to GS Section 131E-13, and it reads as follows. Whereas by resolution adopted by the Haywood County Board of Commissioners on April 21, 1997, as appears in the official minutes of the Board in Volume 16, Page 70, and as reserved and created by that deed dated August 11, 1997, in Book 461, Page 1209, Haywood County Registry, the county author... County Registry, the county authorized creation of the Haywood Regional Medical Center, a hospital authority pursuant to GS Section 131E-17, and at that time conveyed hospital facilities to Haywood Regional Medical Center pursuant to Chapter 131E, subject to the reservation of a reverter of title to the county should Haywood Regional Medical Center convey or attempt to convey any part of the property therein convey. And whereas the aforementioned reverter interest which was retained by the county represents an interest in the hospital facility, which is otherwise known, owned by Haywood Regional Medical Center. And whereas due to recent changes in healthcare industry, Haywood Regional Medical Center has conducted a public bid process for the lease sale or conveyance of the Haywood Regional Medical Center as required by GS Section 131E-13 and is set for approval at its regular meeting on July 24, 2014, the asset purchase agreement which has been negotiated by and between Haywood Regional Medical Center and DLP Healthcare LLC. And whereas in order for Haywood Regional Medical Center to convey unrestricted ownership of the hospital facilities as aforementioned, the county must also convey its reserved reverter interest in the hospital facility pursuant to the requirements of GS Section 131E-13, which includes adoption of a resolution declaring its intent to sell, lease, or convey its interest in Haywood Regional Medical Center to DLP. And whereas prior to adopting a resolution declaring its intent to sell its reverter interest to DLP on November 18, 2013, the county, as required by GS 131E-13D2, solicited proposals from at least five potential prospective lessees or buyers. And whereas after due notice of a public meeting and notices to the required agencies by resolution dated November 18, 2013, the county declared its intent to sell its reverter interest to DLP. Whereas the county received a proposal from DLP to acquire Haywood Regional Medical Center, which was the sole proposal received. And whereas, after due notice and receipt of the information on charges, services, and indigent care as similar facility is owned or operated by DLP, the county held a public hearing on December 16, 2013, on the DLP proposal. And whereas the county has reviewed and has offered suggestions and comments to the proposed asset purchase agreement which has been negotiated by and between Haywood Regional Medical Center and DLP. And whereas the county has caused the notice of this public meeting to be published in the Mountaineer stating that the Board of Commissioners of the county will consider adopting a resolution approving the sale of its reserved reverter interest and approving the sale of the hospital facility to DLP Haywood Regional Medical Center, Inc. If legislation, and it may be changed to an LLC if legislation pending in the General Assembly is passed, but the grantee of the deed is an affiliate of DLP, the corporate owner, and whereas it appearing to the county that the sale or conveyance of the hospital facility pursuant to the asset purchase agreement by and among Haywood Regional Medical Center as seller and DLP Haywood Regional Medical Center as the buyer is in the public interest after considering that the proposed sale or conveyance will meet the health-related needs of the medically underserved persons. And whereas notice of this meeting was duly published as required by GS Section 131E-13D7, whereas copies of the asset purchase agreement were available for public inspection in the county administrative offices and posted on the Haywood County website, and notice thereof appeared in the aforementioned notice which was published in the Mountaineer on July 11, 2014, for at least ten days before this regular meeting tonight. Now therefore, be resolved that subject to and conditioned upon the approval of the asset purchase agreement by Haywood Regional Medical Center, the county hereby approves the sale and conveyance of its reserved reverter interest and the sale of the Haywood Regional Medical Center Hospital Facilities to DLP Haywood Regional Medical Center pursuant to the provisions of GS 131E-13, and the county officials shall be authorized to execute the asset purchase agreement and such deeds of conveyance, deeds of release, bills of sale as necessary to release and convey the interest of the county and the facilities of Haywood Regional Medical Center to DLP pursuant to the aforementioned asset purchase agreement. That's the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager, I understand that we have some representatives from Duke LifePoint here. Would you care to introduce them? I think they have a short presentation they would like to make.
I believe if I could introduce our present hospital chairperson, she will handle introduction.
Okay, all right.
Janie Sinekord-Jayberg has a few words for you.
I'm sorry. Okay, Janie, hi.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Swanger. County Commissioners, thank you so much for allowing us to be here. Very quickly, I just want to give you an update before I introduce our great guest. Your hospital is up and running, and I wanted you all to hear that. And I also wanted to take a moment to say thank you. Thank you to you all. Thank you to our community. I could go on and thank a lot of people, but because of this community, your home is back at Haywood. We're up. So I'm real pleased, so thank you very much. On behalf of our chairman, Frank Powers, and myself, I would like to introduce to you our team from our new owners, soon to be Duke LifePoint. So without any further ado, I'd like to turn this over to the new team.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner and Commissioners, thank you for having us here tonight. And it was about five or six months ago, and we were standing right here. So I could go on for hours and talk about Duke LifePoint, and I'm going to try to be brief tonight. And first, I want to introduce two or three team members that we have here. Behind me in speaking in a few minutes is Dr. Harry Phillips, the Chief Medical Officer of Network Services with Duke University Health System, and Jeff Seraphin, who works with me in Nashville as the President of our Eastern Group. And some of you have met both Dr. Phillips and Jeff Seraphin. My name is David Dill, and I am the President and Chief Operating Officer of LifePoint Hospitals. One of the person that's here with us tonight is Farley Reardon. Farley is sitting in the back of the room, and Farley is our Vice President of Development. And to the extent that there are questions at the end, and we want to make sure we reserve time for questions about some of the details within the agreement, Farley will come up here and be able to speak to those. Tonight, we want to cover three or four things. Who we are as Duke LifePoint, our commitment to your hospital, the overview of our integration process. There's a lot of work that goes into integrating a hospital and transitioning ownership, and we have built processes in place to mitigate the risk and ensure a smooth transition. And then we have a little short video that we want to show that really puts into words what it means to be part of the Duke LifePoint family. This slide, I think we went through back in February or January when we were here. You know Duke, the brand, the quality, the reputation, the depth of clinical resources that they will be bringing to your community. That's on the left-hand side of the spreadsheet. On the right-hand side, you'll know more about LifePoint Hospitals if you don't already. We've been in business for fifteen years. We serve in almost seventy communities, just like yours, around the country in twenty-one different states. Long-term financial strength, the depth of clinical, operating and administrative resources, access to capital, which is something that obviously is very important, and we will be making some big commitments, significant commitments into your community for long-term capital investments aimed at growing services and keeping services close to home. Each of these nine items here are commitments that we'll be making. This is how we meet needs in the interest of the communities that we are fortunate enough to serve in. Quality of care, providing due quality and patient safety oversight. We will be adopting existing charity care and indigent care policies as part of this process. Employees, all employees will be hired subject to drug screening and background checks. Physician engagement, adopt and retain existing bylaws and physician contracts. Maintain, this is very important, and continuation of services, maintain and expand key services currently offered at the hospital. Capital expenditures, I talked about that already. We will be investing significant dollars in the community over the next several years. Taxpayer, something that's not lost on anybody in this room, I know, but we will be a taxpayer of property taxes, sales taxes, income taxes within the county and within the state. Local community input, we will only be successful if we're able to garner input and direction from key constituencies, community leaders, Board of Trustees, Medical Staff Executive Committee. And at the very end, number nine here, the company doesn't pay. LifePoint Hospitals is an investor-owned company, a for-profit company, different than the ownership structure of the hospital today, but we do not pay and never have paid dividends out to our shareholders. They believe that the best way to enhance the long-term value of our organization is to invest all the proceeds inside of our company, inside of our communities, to grow and expand, and that's exactly what we are here to do tonight. Probably the way that shows that we work together better than anything I can put on a sheet here goes back to what Janie was talking about back on June 19, when we got the phone call about what happened here in the community, and a big thank you. And I know you appreciate Janie and the team, the board, the medical staff, all the employees, what they went through, very unusual process. But early morning on June 20, when I got word of what had happened, we made sure that all the resources, what's going to end up being hopefully forty days before Duke LifePoint had any ownership of the hospital, we were able to bring whatever resources that Janie and the community needed that we could offer, working closely with Carolina's Health, working together. So when I think about access to resources, world-class resources, even before ownership in this case, which doesn't happen very often, we were able to bring some resources to the table to really help, I think, Janie and the rest of the team. So that's a little bit about who we are as a company. I could go on and talk hours about what we want to do in the community, but our mission and our goal is to make communities healthier together, keep services close to home, and we're excited to be able to be your partner into the future going forward. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dr. Harry Phillips to talk about some of the clinical intersections between both Duke and LifePoint and the commitment that we'll be making to Haywood Regional.
Okay. I'd like to mention, we appreciate the assistance rendered when the hospital was forced to close because of the fire. And I know the county tried to do what it could, and of course, Janie was very competent in her emergency response, so thank you for that.
Well, you bet. She had a direct line into whatever resources she needed with the company, and she used them quite frequently, which was great.
Thank you, David. I also want to say to the Board of Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be back tonight to address you, as well as members of the community, and we really appreciate this opportunity. I also want to say congratulations to everyone associated with the hospital. I think David has recognized them, but also to the community, particularly to the hospital board, for really making the right decisions in getting this hospital back and online. Many of the services that are offered at the hospital would be considered life-saving services, and the fact that those services came back online very quickly was a real benefit to your community. We couldn't be more enthusiastic about our partnership. We couldn't be more enthusiastic about our commitment to Haywood Regional. And I just want to mention some of these things that we've committed to do here in the community. We want to elevate and promote the quality of local healthcare in the services that we provide to your communities. And again, we can't say how important it is to have these services available locally. We recognize your employees as being an invaluable asset, and we want to continue to enhance Haywood Regional status as an employer of choice. We want to continue to develop your medical staff. Recruitment and retention of great medical staff is the key to success going forward, and we want to be sure that that medical staff is not only an expert and superb medical staff, but has strong ties to your community. We want to continue to enhance the community's confidence in Haywood Regional. And I believe that the resources that we bring, I believe that the great brand name we bring in the form of Duke LifePoint will be a tremendous builder of confidence in the community, in your hospital. On the next slide, you see the comment there that we have an unwavering commitment to quality, and we're very proud of that commitment. We're also proud to tell you tonight that we're also able to tell you that we have a track record of elevating patient safety and quality across all of our hospitals. So not only are we committed, but now we have the track record. In the upper panel there, you see the LifePoint Hospital Engagement Network data that shows you that we have reduced harms in our hospitals. These data apply to both LifePoint as well as Duke LifePoint Hospitals, and harms were reduced almost forty percent over four years. These are harms like hospital-acquired infections, falls, pressure ulcers, things that are really important about the safety of our patients while in the hospital. So we believe this is an important accomplishment. On the second panel down, you see the consolidated inpatient optimal care scores across our Duke LifePoint Hospitals. And we're pleased to tell you that over the same time period, we've improved these optimal care scores fourteen percent. Again, a very meaningful improvement in quality. So we're proud to tell you that we will bring our quality program to your hospital. We will provide resources and expertise to meet your quality program where it is and build from there as we continue to enhance patient safety and quality for the patients of your community, for the patients of your region. So I'm going to hand the mic now to Jeff Seraphin, who's going to talk about the integration process.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Phillips. And again, thank you all for allowing us to be here today. It's been a long journey, and we're very excited to be this close to finally bringing this to closure. Just wanted to speak a little bit about our integration process so you can understand a little bit about what's next. David introduced me earlier. Jeff Seraphin, I'm President of the Eastern Group for LifePoint Hospitals. In that role, I have operational responsibilities for all of the Duke LifePoint Hospitals and the LifePoint Hospitals in Tennessee, North Carolina, Virginia, and Michigan. It's also been my pleasure for the last five years to oversee a group of resources at our Hospital Support Center, whose purpose is integrating new acquisitions into the company. Our integration process is an organized process. We break it into five different work groups, and we are going to be working with your hospital over the next ninety, one-hundred-and-eighty days to make sure that we are marrying what goes on every day here in Haywood with the best practices we see across the country. Our integration process is already started. We've had teams of people here working beside Janie's team, first working to transition all the employees over to new employment and to new benefits, and making sure that first they understand that we're taking care of them and we're providing competitive pay, competitive benefit packages, as we committed to during this transaction. We really have two ways in which we measure, two simple ways that we measure the success of our integration. First of all is, do we add value? So collectively, we have four-hundred-and-fifty people at our Hospital Support Center in Nashville, Tennessee, fifty, sixty people dedicated at Network Services at Duke University, all looking at what's going on here through our due diligence process in Haywood, and trying to understand, how could we add value to what you do here every day? So the first way that we measure how successful this integration will be is, are you better off because you did it? And we know that you will be. We know that when we collectively look at the resources that we can bring from a world-class operator of hospitals and communities like Haywood, and a world-class academic institution, and we can collectively bring those things to this community, we're going to help you achieve your vision for healthcare in this community perhaps better than you would have been able to on your own. So the first question we have to answer is, do we add value? And the second question that we look to in our integration process is, did we do what we said we were going to do? So can we all sit here in a room one year, two years from now, and say that we fulfill the commitments we made during that process? Are you a better healthcare community because of this partnership? And did we fulfill the commitments that we made? We're confident in the answer that you'll give. We won't give that for you. We'll bring other people with healthcare reform and other things going on across the country. There'll be other people looking to become part of Duke LifePoint over the next few years, and we'll bring them here, and they'll talk to you, and they'll talk to the Board of Trustees, and they'll talk to the doctors, and they'll talk to the employees, and they'll ask them that same question. We're confident in the answer to that question. We're privileged to be here. We're very excited. It's been an interesting journey. Janie has found a way to make it very interesting. Janie has found a way to make it very interesting, but it's what we do, and it's what we feel that we do best. We think we're going to be a great partner for you. We think that we're going to help you achieve that vision we have of making communities healthier. I'm going to stop there and be happy to answer any questions that you all might have. Thank you.
Any questions? It's not that we're not interested, but we've been at this, as you know, a long time.
A long time.
We've asked a lot of questions over time about this, and have had many work sessions and many meetings. We've talked to Janie in various settings numerous times, so we look forward to a long and mutually beneficial relationship. We're very, very pleased that Duke LifePoint is becoming a part of our community, and we expect good things, and we're very glad you're here. Commissioner Kirkpatrick has been the lead for the County Commission for many years now since the initial decertification of the hospital back six years ago. About Kirk?
Yes.
Something like that.
Six long years ago.
Yeah. Do you have any questions or comments you'd like to make?
No, I'm just glad that we're here today. I appreciate what you all have done, and the board, the hospital board, has been very diligent. I don't want to leave out people's names, so I'm not going to go through all the names of all the people that have worked very hard, and as a matter of fact, I probably have worked less than any of them together. I will say, I appreciate, I don't know exactly, I missed the board meeting the week after the, we had the fire, but I was out there the night of the fire, and I was really impressed with what our administration did that night, with what the county folks did that night. And I just want to say thanks to everybody that was out there. I don't want to, I would leave out names because there was a lot of people there, and I appreciate Duke LifePoint coming in and providing that support as well, and getting the hospital back, and continuing to stay involved with purchasing the hospital even despite that. And I know this is going to be the best thing for our community, medical-wise and healthcare-wise for our future, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. It's our pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, one other comment.
In looking, I've looked at a lot of documents in my career, but I don't believe I've ever looked at one as thorough as the one you had before, so they know everything they need to know about us and probably more. So, thank you for your due diligence, though. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, our attorney, County Attorney Chip Killian, was very involved in inputs and comment regarding the agreement, and I know Chip is prepared to answer any questions anyone might have. One thing that might be of interest briefly to those watching on television and so forth is the financial arrangements that were made. That's always the question I get, and if you could just talk a little bit about that.
It's pretty much the same as has been set all along. The purchase price, the actual dollars is $29,127,823. All that sum of money, from that sum of money, all the current debts of the hospital, including the Carolina's line of credit, all bank loans will be satisfied. There are no, there is no bond indebtedness anymore on the hospital that the county has under that. $12 million of that will go into an indemnification fund, escrow fund, with a bank that's been chosen by DLP, and approximately $5 million will be set aside to more or less wind up the affairs of the hospital under the hospital authority, and the hospital authority will stay in existence for the six-year indemnification period. The county will have input into that through an agreement that will be entered into between the county and the hospital authority, so that there'll be certain representatives, seller representatives, that will have input into the operations of the funds within the escrow itself. Also, the county will have some involvement in the winding up of, or winding down of Haywood Regional Medical Center authority throughout the process, and how many ever months it might take to fully transition to DLP with the help of DLP. Further, there'll be a Board of Trustees, it'll be appointed by DLP, there'll be a local board that will just provide community input as needed from time to time. I'm just trying to hit some highlights.
Yes.
Those are the financial arrangements essentially. It'll be, as I said, six years before we really know how much, if any, money does come back to the county, but what money comes back to the county will be used solely for health-related purposes. That commitment has been made by this board, and it's something I know that the hospital authority asked for, and I don't want to be overly wordy, but I'm happy to try to answer any questions if anyone on the board has questions about the documents. They are very comprehensive. The county certainly was not a primary party in the asset purchase agreement, but the DLP lawyers and the Haywood Regional Medical Center lawyers with Womble Carlisle certainly allowed me a seat at the table. I had a chance to participate, suggest changes that I felt like the county would like to have, and those requests were honored where possible.
And I understand that the earnings from the escrow funds will be distributed to the county for healthcare-related purposes as well.
Yes, sir.
And I think the county manager is working on a healthcare-related foundation that over time will, I don't know the specifics of exactly what it'll look like, I know we have to deal with IRS regulations and the like. You care to comment, Ira?
Yes, we have had discussions on that, and there is an existing foundation. We've had discussions on how, what roles different entities may play and how to work through those in the near future. And we were waiting for this moment when we found out the exact specifics of that very lengthy agreement till we could really move forward with that.
Right. Now that we have more clarity, we can begin.
Yes.
Greater in-depth discussions. Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments? Michael, Kevin?
No, just, you know, it's been a long process. We're, I think it's an exciting time for Haywood County. You know, we spent a struggle for several years with our hospital, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity. It's been a learning experience for me. I've learned a lot about hospitals and what's going on out there, and very pleased that you guys are sitting at the table and that this is getting ready to happen.
I just would say, I'm looking forward to Duke LifePoint also coming on board, and I just wanted to, you know, one thing that interested me was the way the hospital kind of came about, and Chip might be able to fill it in, but I believe the commissioners or the county stood behind the bond to build the hospital where it is now, and then...
Actually, what happened when the new hospital was built, and I forgot what year it was, it was one of the early years of my tenure.
Late 70s.
In the early 70s.
Late 70s.
As county attorney. The county did sell general obligation bonds.
Right.
But I believe, and I'm almost positive, that the hospital revenues satisfied those bonds, the county never had to step up with any money from the general fund or from the tax base to assist the hospital. The hospital from day one was able to meet the debt service requirements, and so there's no, and the bonds were retired a few years ago.
I just wanted to get that out in the public because I learned that several months ago, and I thought that was really good that our community, the taxpayers didn't have, they stood behind the, you know, to get the bond and the construction going, but then the hospital was able to pay for it, so I think that's good.
Bill? You mean? Kirk, anything? Fine. Okay. Okay, if there's no further comments or questions, then I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution previously read into the record by our county attorney, Mr. Killian.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous? Done. Thank you. Okay. I think we have time to finish one more piece of business before we have to change the tape and take a short intermission, and that would be the request to approve the lease agreements for the Next Step Ministry Open Door and Haywood Christian Emergency Shelter at the old Department of Corrections site. Who wants to start? I suppose Mr. Dove.
And our facilities director, Mr. Burris, will be up here momentarily in case anybody has questions about the actual site itself and what's going on there. But we have discussed with the Haywood Christian Emergency Shelter, Pastor Hunnecamp was up here a little earlier, with Long's Chapel, who runs Open Door, and you heard from Perry Hines, and also with Next Step Ministries, entering a memorandum, or actually entering into a lease agreement for the premises, so that they could operate these ministries on a portion of the DOC facility. A portion of the DOC facility is being retained and is part of a master site plan being looked at to have emergency medical services and emergency management functions on that part of the premises. But as far as the Hazelwood lease, this was lately put up onto the web in its entirety to highlight a few key points. The lease would be with the Haywood Christian Emergency Shelter, and they would then sublease to the other tenants. The other point that I would like to, for folks to look at, is that there are conditions that they would only be able to run it for these limited purposes of helping the economically advantaged and providing services for the homeless, and providing the services for the Next Step Ministry on the property. That the buildings are to be maintained in good repair. Those are some of the other things, and that they are to maintain adequate insurances and responsibility for the premises. That's also part of the lease. And Mr. Burris is here to answer any of the physical property questions, if you have any of those.
Okay. I'll ask a question real quick, Dale. We heard several comments tonight regarding the points of egress and regress from the facility. Can you address that or have a comment on it?
Well, I actually sit back there and making some notes, because of course, I know most of the people, because I live in that area, and I was sitting there making some notes, and you know, the first, the concept that we were given was to remove the fence and have, from the groups, wanted to have parking in the front, which that was the site plan that we had the architect actually come up with, the master site plan, which includes, as Mr. Dove said, the emergency management, the Whinsley EMS base on basically the left side of that property. I think we could explore the different avenue along with everybody else to see what a site plan could actually come up with and possibly satisfy everybody. I know that's probably far stretched to satisfy everyone, but at least come to a common agreement for everybody that this would work. I know what the, I don't know the correct terminology, mission statement is to remove the fences, but to be able to make it work for everybody. Now, of course, I work for the county, and it's my responsibility to do as I'm directed, so that being the case, I still think that we can look at different master site plans. And that's, you know, I mean, that does take a little while to move through, but I think it's something we could explore if that would be the pleasure of the board and the county manager.
You know, there's many moving parts here, external as well as internal, and national exposure and so forth, so I think taking a look at things now and as we move into the future, ways to make it better for everyone is a desirable goal, you know, as long as, of course, we don't want to sacrifice a bird in the hand.
Right.
With some other things that are occurring as well, with, what's the name of that program? The TV show?
Extreme Makeover.
Yeah, yeah, the Extreme Makeover, which could, you know, could end up being around $50,000. So, I mean, to the extent we can, let's explore those other options now and moving forward. And I know we have people of good, you know, good faith involved in this, and they'll be more than happy to do that, I'm sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of those we can always look into and see what we can do, and of course, the way the lease was written up, I think it's pretty well self-explanatory that how we'll work together with that.
Okay. And Chip, you've had a, I know you spent the weekend pretty much preparing these leases, so I know you're very familiar with them. Any comments you want to make?
No, it's a fairly straightforward lease. As was said, the primary tenant is Haywood Christian Emergency Shelter, and of course, they'll be responsible for the premises as a whole. A portion of it will be subleased to the two other organizations that have been mentioned, the Long's Chapel Church and their subsidiary, and then the, call the Open Door, and the Next Step Ministry. They will actually serve as subleases under the primary tenant. The primary tenant will have overall responsibility for the premises. They'll have to provide insurance. All the upfitting and improvements will be done by the tenants, both the lessees and the sublesses. There are provisions in there for access to water from adjacent property or property retained by the county, and there are just a number of things that they have to, they'll have to use the property for the purposes that have been outlined and none other, or come back to the county. There is a provision in there that's also something we talked about just late in the game for a property management committee, so that all three of the tenants would share an input to manage the property and consult with each other on ways that they could all work together on the premises. That's something that's in there that we added late in the week, last week.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any questions. It was a late developing thing.
Yeah, it was. I appreciate your help, your effort over the weekend. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I recognize Commissioner Inslee, I believe for a motion.
Okay. I would move to, we approve the lease agreement between Haywood County and Haywood Christian Emergency Shelter as the leese, and Long's Chapel United Methodist Church doing business as the open door, and Next Step Ministry as subleases. It appearing that this lease and subleases are entities which carry out a public purpose, and a county government purpose to wit, emergency shelter and services for homeless and economically disadvantaged persons, crime prevention, public health, and social services. The county attorney and county manager are authorized to make technical changes as needed from time to time.
Okay. Hearing a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comment or questions?
I just want to make a comment that right now, we, no one, we, I want to thank the faith-based community for stepping up, because in my experience, when, and my belief is, if you change someone's heart, you'll change their actions, and they'll be good citizens for our community, and I appreciate the faith-based community stepping up, because right now there is no help for these folks at all, very little, to help change their actions and their attitudes. So I believe that this will help change their attitudes and their actions, and hopefully make them better citizens and make our community better also.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, let's take a short recess for the tape to be changed, and we'll reconvene in about five minutes or so.